This conference will now be recorded.
Right. Notice is hereby given that the La Gavista City Council is holding a council work session on Tuesday, April 27th, 2021 at 6:30 PM as prescribed by VTC government code section 551 dot 041 to consider the following agenda items. All right, Sandra, please note that we have all council members in attendance and we will skip down to citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. And I have been asked to put the rules of conduct for citizen comments on the agenda every meeting now. Just to remind everybody, so I am going to read them as a reminder. 6.1, the purpose, it is the desire of the city council to hear from the citizens of La Gavista and to stimulate discussion and offer a forum for a cordial and meaningful public debate on matters that are proper, proper, that are properly a concern of the city council. The following rules shall control and govern audience comments. Immediately preceding the opening of a public hearing, the mayor may direct the city manager, the city secretary to read the rules governing citizen comments. A maximum of 30 minutes will be devoted to receiving comments from the public on each agenda item. Each speaker is limited to one presentation per meeting and a maximum time limit of three minutes on any item except for a public hearing item. No individual may address city council without submitting a speaker card at least five minutes prior to the beginning of the meeting. The card must clearly state the subject or issue on which the citizen wishes to speak. If the subject matter does not pertain to city business, the mayor shall advise the individual and or make recommendations out of how, as to how they may get the issue addressed. The mayor can consider comments from citizens that did not submit a request as time permits. Citizens speaking on agenda items shall restrict their comments to the subject matter listed. Citizens speaking on non-agenda items shall only speak on matters pertaining to city businesses or issues which the council would have the authority to act upon if brought forth as an agenda item. Council may not act upon or discuss any issue brought forth as a non-agenda item except to A, make a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, or B, a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Any deliberation of or decision about the subject of the inquiry shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Proper respect, decorum, and conduct shall prevail at all times. Impertinent, slanderous, or personal attacks are strictly prohibited and violators may be removed from the council chambers. No placards, banners, or signs may display, may be displayed in the council chambers or city hall, or city hall. Exhibits relating to a presentation are acceptable. Arguing, intimidation, or other disruptive behavior is prohibited. Discussion and or debate are acceptable only on items specifically listed on the agenda. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, applauding, whistles, yells, or any type of disruptive behavior is prohibited. Applause of appreciation may be acceptable when recognizing a significant event or achievement. Council meetings are the workplace to carry out the business of the city of La Gavista. Therefore, any conduct that could constitute harassment in the workplace is prohibited. In all cases, the mayor shall preside over the council meeting and ensure that proper conduct and decorum is adhered to. The mayor shall preserve order and decorum and if necessary, shall cause to be silenced or removed from the council chambers any person speaking out of order or disrupting the order of the meeting. I did not have anybody sign up to speak on citizen comments. So at this time, is there anybody who would like to address the council on anything that is not one, two, or three? Yes, Paul Roberts.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to speak to the citizen comments that are a new addition to this forum and venue. I'm looking online at the moment, this is from chapter six of our city ordinances. I was trying to find it and I just don't see it there. Am I looking in the wrong place?
It is in the rules of procedure.
Ah, okay. My only question would just be about the limitation, limiting the cumulative citizen input, timed input to 30 minutes. I don't, I've read the Attorney General's Texas Open Meetings Act and the the different sub paragraphs that the language references within that document. I don't see anything in there that gives the city, it allows for the city to do reasonable things such as this, but the limit, the limitation of a total of 30 minutes isn't something I've seen in there.
Right. There's nothing that says that, but there is, we do have, according to our, our rules here, we have, we have the ability to set time limits on discussion.
Yes, sir. I understand that. That's based on the Rosenberg Rules of Procedure. If you look at that laminated document, it's actually from another city, not La Gavista. But the total of 30 minutes, while the Attorney General's Texas Open Meetings Act rules allow for the, for the city to pass an ordinance covering citizen input, I'm just suggesting to you that it might be worth time to have a legal, just make sure that the 30 minute limitation is compliant. That's okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Barth. I'd just like to make a couple of reminders that First Amendment is something we don't want to violate in our little city. It's pretty important to most people based on the Constitution. And open meetings, there are lots of regulations to those and I feel like we've been stretching the limits on a lot of them. And especially executive session, and having been on the city council and participated in many executive session meetings, I find we're discussing things that are not real estate or litigation matters, which it makes sense to keep those quiet. My contention would be that we should have all committee meetings and all executive sessions should be recorded. There's really no justification not to record those meetings. So it's not a private discussion, it's an open meeting discussion. And it can be viewed when the dates no longer protect the real estate transactions and or the litigation. So we've been, I feel like we've been stretching the, the executive session way too far. And it's especially in a Zoom environment, it's a good time for us to tighten that up and start recording all those executive session meetings to avoid open meetings violations. That's all.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, please. Mr. Mayor, my camera's not working. I can't raise my hand. Jane Brunslig.
Okay.
The agenda for this says that the purpose of the desire of the city council to hear from the citizens of La Gavista and to stimulate discussion, discussion and offer a forum for a cordial and meaningful public debate. My question is, if that is true, why was this meeting not posted on our city website as something other than just the agenda?
As far as I know, it was all, it was posted just like any, anything else.
The, the agenda and packet were posted, but there was not an announcement of the meeting.
I don't, I'm not following.
City council meetings are announced on the website. This meeting was not. It's hard to have public debate when nobody knows about it.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
If that's not the case, then yes, that is an oversight and should have, it should have been posted just like any other meeting. Let's see, Thursday, April 15th. Yeah, you're correct. From what I can see. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm looking at the city's website. I clicked on the meetings tab and for April 27th, it says special called council meeting slash work session. It's on the calendar for upcoming events for meetings and it's on the agenda.
Okay. There we go. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Ms. Lucero, I saw your hand up a while ago. Did you have something?
Actually, Jane read the exact sentences that I was going to read as well. And not much time given and the 30 minute maximum does not afford a whole lot of citizens' input and discussion. So yeah, lots of these new rules is kind of counterproductive of this purpose that you stated here in the first sentence.
Well, these are not new rules. These are existing rules. They just haven't been put on the agenda each month.
A perfect time to put them on, to add them.
Yep. Anyone else? All right, we will move into our work session, work session. Number one, discussion regarding Phase Two La Gavista Sunset Park Development. And I will bring in our Parks and Rec Director here in just a minute. But following our last meeting, he was given direction to go back and, and answer a few questions. One was substituting items that were on the Phase Two Park CIP. See if we could substitute things that we felt were better at this time for the park as opposed to what was on the Phase Two list. Also check in on the, on an extension on the, on the grant time periods. And some folk, and focus on a couple of other areas that we had given direction on as far as a park entry, a different entry that would allow TechStot to tie in with turning lanes and get back to us on the restrooms. I can say that we, they have been in contact with Parks and Wildlife. The extension is no problem. And I will let him tell you what he has found out regarding substituting items and then discuss the access and the bathrooms. So at this time, I'll bring in Chris Mobley.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Belay and I met with the Texas Park and Wildlife over the phone on Monday. We are not able to get a stand pat answer whether they, whether it still meets the grant. But when we, her feedback was, she is fairly certain that what we're substituting will meet the grant. She actually said, we're probably going to get more points because they changed the scoring to if you, if you're getting public input on the, and, and meeting with folks and discussing the, what you'd like to do, we would, we would score more points there than, than we did, we did before. So she said, I can't, I, we, we sent the items into her, she's scoring those right now. But she said, looking at this, she doesn't think that it's going to be a, a problem. I let her know that I had talked with, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee had recommended to city council, or they're going to, that they support the changes unanimously 6-0. We had that at our last Parks and Rec meeting. I spoke with KOVB about, about this. I spoke with the North Shore Democrats in their meeting. I'm actually on the May 19th agenda for, what is it? With Elaine to be the speaker at their luncheon to go over this. So she said that was, that was really good steps to do, actually will help us get, get more, more points. We, I think there was a question asked if we could use the softball that we used, that was supposed to be built in the first phase, can we use it for the secondary points? Yes, we can. So she feels very comfortable with, with, with this plan going on. So we did go back and Eric actually recalculated some of the expenses by taking out the two ball fields and adding the other ones. It's actually in the packet and if you look, the Phase Two is $340,000 cheaper than Phase, than the original, the original Phase Two. So what I, what I proposed, it came in at $1,020,000 as opposed to $1,360,000. So not only was it a benefit to the community to add those amenities, yet we're saving, we're saving money on it. So that was, that was, that was, that was very, very good news. One of the other things that the mayor had asked me to look at would, would be options for restrooms. We're estimating that restroom and septic was, would be about $280,000. I suggested that we take out the storage part of, on the restrooms and I can build a, I can get an affordable portable storage unit that's a lot bigger for like $15,000. So in Eric's best guess, he thinks we're going to be able to double our, our stalls with two women's and two men's as opposed to just being two unisex ones. So fairly confident in that. We, when we go out to bid, we'll be, you know, we'll be more confident about it. But we feel like we're going to be able to get the four restrooms and the storage cheaper and, and more for the community for that. The last point was trying to look at an access. We contacted TechStot a while back and they said, they suggested another entryway and they said that it would work and they said, this is where you ought to look first. What they were quoting us on was if we were to go along on, which is to buy all, and get, buy all the land that we need and develop all the turn-ins, it would be about a five-year process at about over $1 million. But they said they can restripe and get turn lanes into the park, what used to be the old exit. It's kind of the, it's kind of the entryway before you get to the church. It's, it's enough vision and we have enough land where we can get a, we can get a safe, safe turn in there. Eric and I are estimating that the, to build the road once we get in to connect to the park to be about $200,000. He doesn't feel like that his folks have the equipment and the know-how to build a road as, as another contractor would. So that's why we're just ballparking that figure right now. So I think those are the things that we were asked to come back to. In your packet, there's information, I think Shalane had asked about water usage. There's, there's, there's information in there on that. And then there's information on every dime that we spent so far on Phase Two. That, that's also, that's also in the, in you guys' packet. So in the packet also is the comparison for what Phase Two was going to be and what we're proposing. And Eric also drew up a map of where would, where we would put these elements. So you can see where, what the first, first one was going to be and now what the second one's going to be. So we feel very happy that we are, that Texas Park and Wildlife, I think things are going to work out well with there. We're adding some amenities to the, to the community. It's just a very important time. This, this park can make a real difference to this community. And I think we've expanded those offerings and from talking with people, they're absolutely loving, loving the change in that. So if you need to speak about financial stuff, that's why Star is here. She knows all that a lot better than I do. But I was just going to speak to what we're finding out the elements to be. And then as far as what the grand total are, this, this, I mean, this projection is $340,000 less. So that's about what we, what we found out in the, in the short time.
All right, I have a question real quick. Are, is staff going to look at other options for bathrooms? Or are we just going to look at the permanent facilities that we were considering, considering prior?
Well, we can do it, we can do either way they want to do. We were just trying to get a figure for, because we went to council on the original one and that was, that was rejected. I, and I thought I had heard because it was, we didn't have enough stalls. So we went to taking the storage off the back to getting more facilities. And so that, that's, that's where we're at with it right now. And that's just a, that's a just, a just best guess estimate, so. But when you take out all the storage on the back, it shrinks the footprint and then you're able to put facilities in there instead of using it up with the storage area.
All right. Anybody on council have any questions? Yes, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind staff about the option that Jonestown used. I forget exactly the name of the type of facility that they had, but if I remember the mayor's speech correctly, they have five stalls on each side and it was $45,000. So I really would appreciate if you guys would check into that option and see if it's at all possible for us to use.
Yeah, I can look, I can look again, but what I, what I had heard from them was they have electric there. I mean, we don't have electric there just yet, so.
And is there no way we could pull electric there?
I'd have to refer to Eric on that one to, to see what that would take. We can certainly look into that. I mean, that's, yeah, 10 stalls at $72,000. That's a great deal.
Yeah, I mean, all the money you save, you could use to pull electric there if you needed to. So I would really appreciate you guys spending some time looking at that option because I think.
Absolutely. I, I, I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
So along those lines, would the permanent restrooms not need electricity?
Oh, Mayor, we had a solar power option on that one.
Ah, okay. All right, anybody else on council? Yes, Council Prince.
My memory of our previous discussion was we gave pretty strong feedback to look at the minimum set of amenities or features that would get us to qualify for grant matching.
Yes, sir.
And I, I don't see that in here. I see, you know, the whole wish list that was brought in last time for a little bit less than the 1.36 million, which is great, but that really doesn't answer the question. And frankly, I'm, I'm completely confused by this whole point system and how it allows to the, or how it relates to the, the dollar discussion that we're having. It sounds like we're very optimistic that we're going to be healthy on points, whatever that means. But that would imply that we could reduce our spend maybe significantly, put off some of these features to a future year and still get the whole grant. And so to me, that, that homework assignment, it sounds like it's still, still out there.
Yeah.
I don't know, Chris or Eric, if you have any answer to that.
Well, we, yeah, we had approached them after the last meeting and said, we want you to score these new elements. And that, and they weren't able to give us an answer. But so Eric and I called Texas Park and Wildlife on Monday and said, what's it look like? And what it is, is you have to get a, it's, it's, it's tough. You gotta, you gotta build the facilities and the things that you want to get the points. And you go and say, this is what we're scoring. But if you don't do those, if you don't do, do those things, you're, you're, you're not getting the points that you need to get the grant. Now, there's a possibility too, is that we don't get the grant. You know, if we don't, if we don't do any of that, we don't get the grant. But the grant is a $500,000, so I, and Eric, you can correct me. I, I assume that she said that she would get with us shortly whether we meet that or not. So it, you have to get a certain amount of points to be able to, to be able to meet the requirements of, of the grant. I do not have a firm yes from her, you know, she wouldn't commit to that and I don't blame her. But she said by looking at it, we look like we'll even get more points than, than what we originally done because of our public participation. So I don't have an answer just yet, but as soon as I get it, whether it meets that or not. Or, you know, we don't include the $500,000 in the total to build the park and we don't have to worry about meeting the grant. Those are kind of the options.
Well, just follow up on that. I, I understand what you just said, Mr. Mobley. And I mean, that's what you had already said, which is good. But I'm still not hearing any path to figure out what shorter list of features gets us, you know. But I mean, have you even already created the prioritized list? So we know what our order of priority of these features is from one through 10 or whatever it is. And then second, you know, what, have you had the discussion with the Parks and Wildlife folks saying, we're on a tight budget over here, we're kind of, we're thinking some of these things may come off. We're trying to figure out how to get to the grant, you know. I'm trying to follow the conversation, so.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may, we did look at the list and actually the only thing that is redundant on our list was the paving of the parking lot. Everything else is a necessary item that we had included in the grant. So there was, it didn't seem that would be a good, good time spent in going back and forth with Texas Park and Wildlife to try to remove elements that really we had included in our original grant application that we're scored for. So we didn't, basically, the only thing that is redundant that we don't get points for is the paving of the parking lot that we have included in the estimate. And that is about $60,000.
Well, and.
Mayor, 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 may I state something real quick? Let's see, I was going to see if Eric could clarify. The points and dollars are not the same thing. I don't know if Eric can speak to how many points it takes in order to be awarded the $500,000 grant, but it's not like we spend $500,000 or $585 and we automatically get $500,000 back in return. So maybe he can speak to how many points we're actually looking to try to receive in order to qualify for the grant to begin with.
Mayor, I'll be honest with you, Texas Park and Wildlife does that. They don't tell us how they come up with that. They just tell us at the very end how they scored. They kind of give you a roundabout idea what kind of criteria they use to score it, but it's, it's not something that we're able to determine ourselves by looking at what we have and what we can take from it, so.
Well, and I can also say in my discussions with, with Chris is we submitted everything so we can get the total, you know, get a score. And then if there's things that we can take off and still stay above the score, then that's what we would do. But we, we didn't want to be short and then try to come up with something or add something on. So we felt like we would submit what was on our list and then, and then could remove stuff if we were capable.
Yeah, and in talking with them too, they were very, very helpful with this, but they kind of cautioned us about continuing to, to add and take off on, on what, what originally was scored and what was originally granted. She was very good with it. And what, if it's, if it's needing to save on costs too, you know, there is a wish list. I mean, I mean, I was very happy that we came in a lot under from where we were before, but it all, that all depends on how much money we have. We have priced out some of those elements of what they cost. And if we don't have the money, then we start making decisions on what goes off and then trying to find out if that has affected our getting the grant. So they've been, they've really helpful, really working with this. But, you know, they basically said, let's try to keep it to one change because we've already, we've already approved that. So, and we did, we did change the first phase of what we did. And, and we, now we're proposing to have one more change on, on, on the second one. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable continuing back and, and taking, taking things off and on because they already kind of agreed with, agreed with what we were going to do. And they've already been through the point system and they, they cleared all that, so. But if that's the direction, we'll, we'll go.
I'll just make this closing comment that, that the full list that we looked at last time is what you guys have taken in for scoring. And what I'm hearing is, it's going to be hard to remove anything from the list. And I, I thought there was pretty clear feedback that, you know, with everything going on, we were not have a. you know, with everything going on, we were not have a mind to spend the full amount. And when I look at it, at the numbers here, plus the bathroom, we're still looking at something that's when, you know, and the, and the, the access way, we're still looking at something that's the same kind of total dollar spend as what we had coming in. So I don't, I don't know what the best process is, but I feel like purse strings have, have not been tightened on this, on this, on this project at all.
Well, the restrooms, the restrooms weren't originally in the, in that, in that phase. So that's kind of a $300,000 add. If we would have stayed with the fields, it would have been 340 back in. And you get to the point where you, you can take some things out, but then you also got to leave things in for people to do in, in the park. Again, it's a really, really critical time to do this right because it's, it's a fantastic park and be a fantastic attribute to the city. But if we are needing to come down numbers, we can look at that.
Well, and Paul, a lot of this plays into this next fiscal year's budget for our CIP budget. So at this time, you know, we, we've only tightened the strings a few hundred thousand dollars, you know, with making these changes. But we're also executing the request to extend so that when we go into this budget cycle, we can look at what we actually have available in addition to what we have available right now. And if we set, if we have to make any more judge, more adjustments, that's when we will do it, is at this, this next budget cycle. And it may be to, at a point where we can't afford to fund it and we just, we forego the grant. But that's why, but we're not completely taking that out yet because we have the ability to extend for a year. So.
Thank you. That's a very significant point, which I didn't connect the dots on from the earlier comments. So the numbers that we're looking at tonight for this phase two stuff would not be money spent all in this fiscal year. It would, it would have the ability to bleed into the next fiscal year and still meet the grant time. That's what I'm hearing.
Right. And my, my direction or my recommendation has been for us to simply focus on that entry point and restrooms. And anything else that's associated with the grant goes into that extension and we go from there. So, you know, if we're looking at 200 to 300,000 for the extension, including TexDOT as an estimate. And then whatever we spend on restrooms, that would be it for our CIP this fiscal year. That'd be it. So that would be a significant for this fiscal year tightening, but it's still, it's, they're still out there on that wish list, you know? Anybody else on council? Yes, Councilor Marion?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first one is about the, the, the rates to water the, the park. I'm looking at page 11. And when I totaled it up, it was round about $53,400 so far that has been spent on watering the park. This will be the first year that we have to water the park through a full summer. And so two questions. The first question is, where is the, the money for watering the park coming from? Is this also being charged to the park accounts? And if so, is it reflected in the, the budgets that are a little bit later in the packet? I couldn't specifically find it.
Yes, ma'am. It is out of the parks budget.
Okay. And is it in those, is it included somewhere in those figures that you have later on for phase one, two, three, four?
I don't think my budget's in there to, to show that it's coming out of there. But it, that the part, the water does come out of the parks and rec budget.
Okay. And at one point, there was going to be a conversion of water wastewater treatment plant three, I think, to, at a cost of about 450,000 so that that water could be treated to be type one and used to water that field. At a cost of anywhere between 50 and 100,000 a year, it looks like it could be for, for watering the, the park. I just wonder if it would be more cost effective to move forward with that at some point, or if that conversation is off the table and we're just going to continue to use drinking water? Or, or I should say, water from the current line to water the park?
Yeah, that, that's definitely something what we have to look at. If you're looking at that one on 11, I'll let Star add on to this in a little while too. If you look at the very bottom, it kind of skews it because we had a water leak out there. So you got a $30,000 bill that first month because we had a water leak out there that pumped a lot of water out that actually didn't go for irrigation. So it skewed a little bit where it skewed about 30, anywhere from 27 to, you know, $29,000 off of that. So it, yeah, we, we definitely need to look at, you know, this summer's rates and stuff and see the conversion of the wastewater treatment, the affluent on, yeah, I mean, that's also something that's in our wish list. I don't know it, what phase, it's not part of the grant, so it's not in a, in a phase. It's just one of those supplementary things that we are considering with the parks. So that'll be one of those things that this summer during our budget and part of our five-year long-range plan that we discuss and see at what point we may be able to afford that water treatment conversion. Just on a, on a side note here, if y'all are not counsel, if you're not watching what's going on in our state legislature, they are trying to pass bills that would pretty much force cities to pay for everything in cash. They're, they're trying to eliminate CO bonds. We could still get bonds, but they would be, they would be become all general obligation bonds, voter approved bonds, which is fine. But it's just going to make it, it's going to make it tougher for some of our smaller type items to pay for. It's gonna, it's gonna have to be a lot of cash on hand for stuff if the House bill passes. But it might be just something you want to look into. So. Uh, yes, Councilor, what did I see? Dick, there you are.
Yeah. On converting the affluent water to type one, the main problem that I see with that is that you need the affluent water. We had a number of occasions this summer, this last summer, when we did not have enough affluent water to water the golf course. Our citizens are being very good about their water usage and our actual production of affluent is down from where it was. And we ran out of affluent water to water the golf course this last summer. And it, unless something else happens, that's not really foreseen, there's not going to be enough affluent to water the, the sports complex with affluent water. So putting in that conversion facility at this point is probably kind of putting the cart in front of the horse because I don't believe that we're going to have enough affluent water to be adequate to meet that need. And to spend the money on that right now doesn't make much sense to me.
Yeah. But it's in our wish list. And just to add on, if I may, back during the drought a few years ago, we got down 60 something feet. LCRA was very close to limiting, to banning using raw water on any type of, well, they said golf course, but I don't know if it applied to all parks or not. At that time, had that happened, Lago Vista, would it, the city of Lago Vista would have been the only golf course on Highland Lakes that had access to water because we have an affluent system. So our, our affluent system is fantastic that we have it. With our growth of 10% every year, hopefully our production will increase, that we will have enough water for the golf course and, and our city park. But we'll just have to see. Right now, Lake Travis is down slightly over 24 feet. So we're, we're getting, we're pretty, we're probably getting close to going into phase two LCRA restrictions. I haven't looked at the total volume, but we're getting close. Yes, Councilor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was just gonna echo what Dick said and, and, and what you said as well. You know, maybe two to five years from now, our growth will have made it make sense to have that conversion. But now, now, like Dick said, I don't think it makes all that sense. I did want to ask Mr. Mobley if he had gotten any kind of feedback from the Texas Parks and Wildlife people, when they would have that new scoring back. I know Council Prince is concerned about, you know, you know, what can we take out and take in? But it seems like until we get that scoring back, it's very difficult to make any decisions along that point. So, Mr. Mobley.
Hey, Eric, do you remember what she said? Didn't she, I think she said it would be in a short time. Is that what you heard? Or was I just wishing?
Yeah, she says she had several deadlines ahead of our item. And I think after this deadline that she had this week, we were going to be the next one on their list to take a look at. So it probably might be early next week.
Yeah, she said she was busy until Wednesday and, and said that she would be doing the scoring after that. So as far as how long that takes, you know, I, I don't know. But I, I, I heard sooner than later because we told her we're like, until we get this question answered for sure, we're kind of at a standstill.
Got it. And I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could, I just want, one last point. I, I hear the concern about wanting to limit spending at the park, but I, I'm a little hesitant to see all of the whatever limitations that we think we might need come strictly out of the, the parks budget. And I would point to our packet material. It lists other projects that are out there, one of which is the $650,000 hanger project up at the airport that I believe we've all, you know, said isn't going to happen. We don't have the approval. We're not going to get the reimbursement. So that's 650,000 that we thought we were going to spend that we're not. So I don't know that we've got to, you know, take everything out of the park. We've already get some things that are helping us with the, the budget situation. Thank you.
Yeah. And I've got those, I've got those bullet points. When we get to the other CIP discussions, I will kind of talk, talk on those. Yes, Council Williams?
Do we have any idea when we'll have firmer numbers on what it would cost to do the road and access into the park? Is that something that we could get relatively quickly? Or is this going to be a long process on getting the, the actual numbers?
I'll, I'll let Eric address that in a little bit, but just from the discussions that we've had, it is something that's above and beyond the capabilities of our city crews. So it would be something that would go out for bids. So now we, you know, you'd have to go through the whole bidding process too. But, you know, Eric's had enough bids in the past. He has a, an idea of how, how much something like this costs. And that's where he gave us that 200 to $250,000 range. Not, not including the TexDOT. But I mean, in today's world with what's going on around Austin, who knows what the bid will come in at? So do you have a follow-up?
Yes. Does that mean that we could get it done within the, this fiscal year?
Yeah, I don't know the turnaround time on that. Putting it out for bids, giving them 30 days. Yeah, probably within this fiscal year, probably. Eric, did you have more to add?
Yes, Mayor, I, I don't want to complicate the issue. One of the things they gave us points on the grant last time was that the road where we're proposing it to be was supposed to be dedicated parkland. And there's not supposed to have any type of impervious cover on it. So one of the things that we did ask Parks and Wildlife to also look into with the re-score needs to remove our 10 acres match that we had on the original grant application for phase two. So that's going to make things, if that goes through, then it shouldn't be an issue placing the road there. If that doesn't go through and we need those four points, then obviously we have to go back and ask Texas Parks and Wildlife if they can make an exemption to adding a driveway through there in the dedicated parkland.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. More discussion items with them. All right. Yes, Council Marion?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions pending from our last meeting that I, I didn't find answers to in, in the packet. Maybe someone can point me to them. The first one being LCRA. Have we heard yet from LCRA if they'll even approve a septic system out at the park where, where staff is, is intending to put the bathrooms? That's question number one. Question number two, what about the, the cost for lighting, pulling out poles and things like that? I think last time somebody mentioned something about hoping that we could connect the Tassara or something in a few years. But what would the cost of, of lighting and all of that be if we, if we can't do that? And the last question, there are still amounts here. I'm looking at the page 32. A million, $50,000 in phase three from Travis County. $1,360,000 from TexDOT in phase four, $2,034,000 in, from Travis County in phase four. Are those all guaranteed? Monies that would be coming from Travis County? Or are they wishes and hopes that will be coming from those? And if they're not guaranteed funds, then we should probably, in my opinion, be adding that to the city budget slash other grant funds if found, because it almost seems misleading to indicate that those are not going to come from city funds when we really don't know if they will.
Right. Yes. And that, that just kind of goes with that five-year long-range plan. You know, that's, it's, it's just a wish list and those revenues are, we, we put wish, revenue wish list in there, just like we do expenditure wish, wish list. And not, none of it's, none of it's guaranteed. So each year, when we go through our budget and we're deciding on that year's CIPs, if that, if none of those things were a reality, then we take them out at that, at that time and update the current year and the five-year plan to reflect that. So you know, those changes may be coming in this, this year's budget cycle. So Eric, were you able to answer? Are you able to answer the other questions? I don't know. The electricity may be a tough one at this point, but.
I will try, Mayor. Just on the electric, just previous experience with trying to take, get electric to Baylor Scott and Wild Hospital. It'd probably be a few hundred thousand dollars. One of the challenges is that within parkland, one of the things that they do not allow is overhead power lines of any kind. So that's one of the things that makes it very expensive to bring power to this side. There's two types of electrical. It's basically a single phase, which is what you need for normal lighting and bathrooms and just the generic things. And then there's three-phase lighting, which is what you would need for, to actually light the ball fields with proper lighting. So that's something that we discuss in the future. At this, at this time, it was not something that was budgeted or discussed. It was something possibly in the future to, perhaps, and one, one of the hopes was to try to piggyback off of a nearby Tassara project when that happens. And regard to the septic, we are working on an application to LCRA right now. That takes some time. And actually, we won't get an answer for a few months. One of the things that we did do to accommodate whether or whether we not get, going to get a permit from them would be to design these bathrooms with large tanks to where if we get electric in the future, it would be easier to put in grinder pumps. If we don't get electric in the future, but we do get LCRA permit to install, obviously we installed the septic system. If we don't get LCRA permit, then obviously we'd have to pump this out maybe once a month or once every two months. Make it for however long that we need to do that.
I did get an estimate on ball field lighting if we wanted to light the fields. And at the time, we were including the two fields that we had. And at the time, we were including the two fields that we had, two fields that we had and two other fields. And a soccer field would be around $800,000 for, for Muska to do the overhead lights. So another reason why I felt like the field thing was going to be costing us more money with lights, with water and all those things. So it, the ball field lighting is, is very expensive too.
So without the other two, we're still, we're looking at about 60%, two ball fields and soccer. So that's still 480,000. Also.
Budget though, right? I'm sorry, Mayor.
I, I was just saying, along those lines, again, it's wish list items, but LCRA and PEC both award what they call Community Development Block Grants, CDBG. And usually they're for parks and recreation-type things. We, we've applied for them for other projects. We have not received one. But this is more along those lines that they list in their applications and, and once they become available for application, we'll apply for block grants with those two entities. And, you know, hopefully it'll help with some of the lighting. They're not very large block grants, you know, 20, 25,000 max, but it's a little bit. And you have a follow-up, Counselor Marion?
No, I was, I was just asking that the, that cost though, for the lighting isn't in here anywhere right now, right? It's not anywhere in these, these estimates? Okay.
Anyone else, Counsel? Yes, Counselor Prince?
I was just going to follow up, looking through the budget book in Mr. Mobley's operations and maintenance. This is for Counselor Marion. There's actually a $38,000 budget item that he has to pay for water services. So that's, it wouldn't show up in the packet today because it's not a capital expense. It's an operational expense that's in his existing budget.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, Star, you've been listening in. Was there, was there anything that you needed to add or wanted to add regarding, you know, the water bills or anything else at all? I think we may have covered it all, but I'll give you the chance to, need to.
Not so much on the water bills. I included the park bills just so that there would be a point of reference to see how much we are putting out for all the ball fields we already have in existence. So there would be something to, to compare it to. One thing I did want to put before Counsel's mind is just to remind you that that using the park fund money right now, we have $585,000 in the park fund bank account plus some interest money. That against whatever projects are approved by Counsel, if any are approved in this budget cycle in this discussion tonight, would greatly reduce the general fund reserve contribution. So I just want to make sure that y'all are remembering that. So even if you went with the million-dollar project list that Chris has here, we actually have the 585 already set aside. So it leaves you paying 435 out of the general fund reserves as opposed to the, the whole million.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mayor, I just needed to add a point of clarification on the electric lighting. So the electric lighting was included in the estimate for phase three. It doesn't show here as broken down, but looking at another piece of estimate that was used to put this together, we had said, we had estimated $400,000 for ball fields or baseball field lighting for, for during phase three. And I think, I believe the rest of it was for the bathrooms. So you'll see that on phase three of the general park estimate.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else, Counsel? Yes, Counselor Prince?
And this is just a clarifying question. I guess I should have asked earlier, but there, there's, in the packet, there's, there's an engineer's estimate on page 30, and then another one on 32. And I'm trying to, want to make sure I understand exactly what the, is that page 30 is just what it used to be and 32 is new and updated? What are those two pages?
So you talking about for phase two?
I'm talking about, well, the whole page because there's phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four on both page 30 and page 32. And they're both labeled engineers exploratory opinion of probable construction cost. So what's, what's the difference between page 30 and page 32 of the packet?
Yes, Mayor, that, Mr. Counsel Member Prince is correct. The first one on page 30 is the original estimate that was presented to Counsel back almost a year ago at this point. And the second one is the revised estimate if we were to remove those park elements as we discussed and add new park elements. And that phase two was split into phase two A and two B, just to look at some alternatives, whichever one Counsel wants to choose.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else, Counsel? All right, if that's all I have from Counsel at the moment, I do have Mr. Don Barthow, who has signed up to speak on this agenda item. Mr. Barthow, you have the floor.
Thank you. So a big deal, right? This is a big park. We, we've committed a lot of money to it. We, our, our city got torn up pretty good this year by an ice storm, we all remember. And it's just constantly in my brain that we have people in our city that have streets that you need a four-wheel drive to go down. So when we're talking about what everyone needs and what's the best use of the taxpayer dollar, we always have to take that into consideration. This park, I was on the council when we voted to approve this park. And my recollection is, we voted, it was two $500,000 grants and, and we committed a million dollars to match them. So we committed, we voted on a park that was not broken into phases. We committed to spending $1 million to a million dollars worth of grant matches. Now you guys are discussing phase two, phase three, phase four of a project that was presented to us. And I was the liaison to the Parks and Recs Committee. And our city engineer, Eric Belay, in the meeting with Parks and Recs, everyone was so excited when we passed the, the, the proposal to do the park. And, and everyone was very excited. And Eric said to the Parks and Recs Committee, he said, you guys have done the hard part. All you have to do is get the project started. And then the Council will spend whatever they have to, to finish it. And I hope we don't live in that world. We cannot go on that way. Doing business that way is a guaranteed failure. Right? We have a park that the citizens all were like willing to spend a million dollars on a park. 90% of the citizens are in the LVPOA with 11 waterfront parks. It's not our biggest problem. We go back to the streets. But now you guys are, I mean, I, when I voted for a million-dollar expenditure on a park, I was confident that it would have electricity and it would have bathrooms. Otherwise, it's a not very useful park. And I was confident that our engineer would know we would need a million-dollar turn lane. That was, none of that was presented, presented to us. So I see it as the deceptive trade practices, right? This is to me, it's a bait and switch. And we were told one thing and delivered something else. And to me, that's fraud. I think to any authorities that come along, that'll be fraud. I think this park is a critical problem right now. My, my understanding is we have three employees working for a park that's not even officially functioning, not, not even scheduled events, right? So we need to, we need to bring things back to reality and acknowledge where we started, what we voted on with citizen input, and where we're going to go from here. I believe we should stop spending money on the park, find a minimum amount of expenditures that get it open and functional and safe. And, and have that minimal equipment list. Before we start talking about wish lists and grants, we need to go back to a, a fairly functional park and focus on important things like streets.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I've got more.
All right. Is there anybody else and citizens? That he's the only one I had that signed up. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to see the pause that took, that was initiated on this project a couple of months ago. I think it's great that you guys, all of you, including the Parks and Rec Committee, are diving in to this and trying to get it done right. Including staff, Mr. Mobley and Eric. I applaud all of you. The reference to the bathrooms in Jonestown at that Chamber of Commerce meeting with the, the mayor of Jonestown, I remember when he brought that up, Kevin mentioned $45,000 cost. I don't know if that was what they paid or what they cost new. But I do remember the mayor saying that those were used. So just a consideration on that, on that price point. I want to, I'd like to echo the mayor's comments regarding the entrance. When you go over there to the park, we need to get that entrance cleaned up soon as possible. You guys are looking into the roads, the turning lane. I think that's great. Focusing on the entrance, the turning lane should be a priority, provided that it doesn't, you know, we can get this done without taking away the points to adversely impact our ability to get that grant. The bathrooms, somebody mentioned earlier, somebody, I think Mr. Prince asked the question about how we're going to get electricity to the bathrooms. I didn't, I heard the word solar, but was it solar lights or was it solar power? May I have an answer to that question?
Yeah. Where's Eric? Eric, was it just for lighting or was it going to provide electricity as well?
Hey Mayor, for the bathroom project was a bid option for contractor to provide solar, light solar usage within the bathroom. So obviously lighting, but just minor, minor usage for the outlets and things like that. I believe one of the requirements was, I want to say the 2,000 or 4,000 watt generator. I'm not sure. So something I need to look into.
Thank you. I appreciate you, you answering that question for me. That's it. Thank you, guys, for all the work you're putting into this. I appreciate it as a citizen. I'm looking forward to finality over there and having some more fun. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. All right, Counsel Wetherly?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to clarify a couple of things from Mr. Barthow's remarks. This park was conceived and was planned as part of the comprehensive plan. This thing was started, first proposals and first amounts in 2017. And we have some of those in the packet. And even the first initial proposals were for a $4 million park. Now I have no idea where Mr. Barthow was while he was on the council. But he had to be absent from a number of meetings not to have heard the discussion that we were only into phase one and that there was going to be three or four phases before we got the park finished. And the discussion from the very beginning, the day that I got on the council in 17, was that the park was going to be at least a $4 million park and could, depending on the cost of construction and work, end up being as much as a $5 or $6 million park. And if you look at the proposals that were prepared by Walker Engineering, which was before Mr. Belay came on, before Mr. Barthow was on the council, actually before I was on the council, you'll see that the proposals were for four to $5 million. There was never any discussion that I ever heard on the council about these parks, that this was going to be a million-dollar park. And in every discussion, there was talk about the fact that there were things that we were going to have to put into the park ourself because the grants that we were getting from Parks and Wildlife was not going to allow us to put in some of the amenities that a park needs. All of that was discussed at length. All of that was presented to the council. And it was all things that we were aware of. There was no bait and switch. Mr. Barthow just apparently did not do his homework and was not involved enough to find out what was going on. There has been no effort by the council in the last two terms to try to conceal anything or to hide anything from the public. These things have been discussed in open, in session and were all information that was easily acquired from the city records.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, along those lines though, you know, there's no, there was no timeframe. I mean, we, we did have the understanding that this was going to be a huge park eventually. There's, there just wasn't a timeframe associated with it. And we're at a point right now where we've got to make sure that we're not being too aggressive and, and outspending. So yeah, I mean, who knows? I mean, we've got so many ideas coming in from the citizens and stuff that, yeah, this part.
Mr. Mayor, how much have we spent so far?
10 or 15 years from now, maybe quite large, but, yeah. So, yeah. Don, you had, you got your three minutes. We're not going to open up discussions here. So. Yes, Mr. Prince?
I, I just wanted to clarify also that parks open. So, you know, when I went out there on the, the brush drop-off day, there were ball games going on at the same time. So there was a statement made earlier that the park's still not open, which is certainly not the case. It's, it's, it's under active use at this point.
Yes, we do have baseball, softball, flag football, soccer. Someone has contracted with the city to use the space for a camp gladiator type. She's using the soccer field for workout. So, yeah, the, the park is quite being, is being used. Not to mention the trail system. You know, it's not, not a great complete trail yet, but it is being used. So, Mr. Mobley, do you have?
No, we're, we've got, we've got what you mentioned. We've got softball. We got a first softball tournament, May the 16th out there. A showcase tournament for the local, local kids, maybe in high school. And they're going to, we're going to invite college coaches to come out and get a look at the girls in the area to possibly get them scholarships and everything. So we are, we're actually had to divide the soccer field in half to accommodate, to accommodate everybody. So it's, it's working and more people are interested in, in, in doing it. So we're, if, if we don't have any more functions in, in, until a while, we still got enough to do out there with what we got going on. So.
All right. Anybody else before we move on to the next? Yes, Ms. Ucero?
With all of the action that's going on there, how much money have we made on it so far?
Have we made on it?
Well, the, the contract that you guys have, the gladiator person and the softball tournament and the.
We're not, we're not charging the Lago Vista boys or the Lago Vista girls to, to use the soccer field. That's sort of why we built those. And, and anything that we would charge them, they'd have to come back and, and put it back on the, on the backs of the parents to, to give us that. My philosophy is that's why we built those, we built those fields. We are under contract with Mica for her, for her boot camp. We get a percentage of, percentage of her earnings. We will be renting the field out on, on May the 16th to the softball, to the softball tournament. So, but we're not, we're, we haven't rented the fields out yet to anybody other than the boys and the girls of Lago Vista because they need, they need usage of that. So at, at this point, you know, we're not charging people to use the trail of the scent garden or, or to practice soccer. The soccer teams are from Lago Vista too, and it's Lago Vista Kids, which I think we should be, we should be taken care of. The soccer teams are from Lago Vista too, and it's Lago Vista kids, which I think we should be, we should be taking care of.
And what about the adult flag football program that we have? Are we?
It has not started yet, but we will have, under contract with them, yes. Because it's, it's Lago Vista, but it's also teams from the other areas to play too, because we can't get enough teams with just the, the Lago guys. So it's our philosophy too is to, you know, I want people to come into the park and use our park and, and visit our restaurants and do that instead of everybody going out, out to Cedar Park. I need folks to start coming in and seeing what we got and building our program. So the flag football, adult flag football, we will have an agreement with them also. They, they haven't started yet though.
And there is one difference with, with Mica's gladiator type camp. I don't know what it's called, just Mica's whatever. Because she charges her participants, that is where there's a contract with her, kind of like the farmer's market. You know, the farmer's market charges fees for the, for the booths. So in return, the city by law has to charge a fee for use of city property for somebody that's making money while using city property. So but your youth programs and stuff are, are different from those.
Okay. And so, because I, I saw that the flag football group is charging money. Are, are we getting that? And then where does that money go?
Yeah, we will go, we will get a percentage of that, and that's just general fund money. It doesn't go back into, well, yeah, it goes in, it goes back into the park fund basically because we're using a lot of general fund money to, to do the things we need at the park. It's just not directly there.
Yeah. The park is not an enterprise fund in itself, so it doesn't have its own fund like the airport and the golf course and the utility department.
Thank you.
All right, one, one more real quick. You're almost out of time. Oh, is that it? All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Brunkley.
We've, we've talked a lot about restrooms tonight. Okay, from LCA.
Hang on, timeout, timeout.
Septic system. And it's my understanding that the application for such was not applied here very long ago. How far can we go?
Timeout.
Plans for a five stall?
Jane, Jane, timeout. Can you, can you turn off your screen and turn on your volume? Because we can see you, but we can't really hear you. All right.
Okay. If I understand, permission from CRA to a septic system, it wasn't very long ago when we applied for such. So we're, you know, what, a five stall restroom or something? How far go? What's the timeframe there?
Jane, we're only catching about every third word you're saying. So we're having real difficult following you. If you could turn off your camera and just speak, maybe that'll help us.
Okay.
Now try.
We have no permission to install a septic system. We only recently applied for, do so, permission from LCA.
Yeah. Right. Again, you're breaking up. We can't really understand you. But yes, we do. We have, we have recently applied for the application. I don't know the timeframe of when LCA would give us an answer on that. Eric, do you have a timeframe of when we might hear back? How long's the application process for septic take? Take?
Mayor, that takes several months. It took us a while to find an engineer who'd actually do that design without having to give him thirty thousand dollars. So so we're just now reaching out to LCA. We're working on a design with them. It will take several months to get an answer.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Are we ready to move on to the next topic? All right, we will go to number two here. Let me go back up here. Discussion regarding general fund allocated CIPs. Okay, let's see what page they start on. So I'll start off by talking about two of those that we have. That was, I believe, Councilor Sullivan mentioned earlier, and that was, well, he mentioned one, that was the T-hangers. The way those are set out, those, the reason they're separated in your packet like that, those monies have already been taken out of the general fund reserve ballots and put into an account specifically for those projects. Now, because that project is on hold, I have asked about the ability to pull that money back into general funds. Because if we're not going to spend it at any time soon, I think it's something that would need to go up for council during our CIP budget process again and be looked at. And that money shouldn't be just hanging out there. Darn it. Stop. So that is one, you know, that may be able to, if we can pull those monies back in and put it back in the reserves, that would be one. There's also on there is the library and city hall expansion project. I had a discussion with Jan today. Matter of fact, she sought me out. She was here in the building and said that as far as the library is concerned, that is not necessarily a project that is priority for them at this time. With our other issues that we discussed at previous council meetings with possibly having to expand, you know, office space for people here in this building, we may need to look at that project. That may be another project that we need to put on hold and take those funds, put them back into the, into our reserve and, and look at different alternatives. It may be using it for other office space where it may be just used for expanding this half of this building here and holding off on the library portion of it. But that's, so that's something that, you know, needs to come up, you know, for consideration. So if, if those are two funds that are not necessarily a priority and have fallen off, fallen out of our CIP list, you know, that can be put into the five-year plan, two or three years down the list, down the way, maybe that's, you know, I don't, I don't have it right in front of me. What was it? One point, you add them together, seven seventy-five and six fifty, you're looking at one point four two five that could go back into CIP, general, general reserve funds to be put on higher priority projects. So those are the, those are, those two items there, the greens construction, that's already done. So that's already underway. So that's not one of those that can be brought back. Looking at all the, the other projects, you know, I, I don't, I'll let Eric talk about the street rehab projects. Our priority right now is obviously Lowman Ford Road. I think that's going to cost us at least twice what we had originally budgeted for that. And with the timing and everything, most of the, if not all of the other street rehab projects are going to be delayed into the next fiscal year. So these will be something as we go through the budget process, we'll be redoing our street, street rehab, because now we've got to pick up what we're not going to be able to do this year and what we tentatively had scheduled for next year and, you know, redo the whole street rehab program from this point on. So that's where we're at on the other general fund reserve CIP projects. Eric, did you have anything you would like to add to that before I go to council?
No, Mayor, you summed it up pretty good. We're probably going to be busy with Lowman for the first half of summer and one of the things that we're trying to bring to council is do some drainage work ahead of some paving that we anticipate. That was, that was always the intent. So that project's out for bid now, and it depends on where we come on that. However much money council feels like spending the rest of this year, that's going to dictate what other streets we're going to be able to bid before the end of, the end of September.
All right. Thank you. All right, council, questions, comments? Yes, Councilor Prince?
On, on streets, and Mr. Belay, I think these questions are going to be addressed to you. So the, the original budget for streets, of course, there's a street department budget, your own employees and, and that, which, kind of remember that number, maybe one point eight million. But in, in the capital budget, I believe we had, in addition to that, we had in the capital budget, two point eight million, of which four hundred and fifty thousand was for Lowman. So if we double Lowman to nine hundred thousand, we've still got something on the order of two million dollars in the capital budget that we had planned to spend on streets. And we're certainly hearing loud and clear from all of the citizens that streets are, are a high priority. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, are we so far behind on spending the money that was allocated because the, we're expecting the city employees to do some significant portion of it? Should we be, and let me rephrase it, should we be looking more aggressively to outsource more, more of this work so that we can get more done in this fiscal year with the money that was already allocated, the two point eight million dollar total?
Mayor, council, very good question. We are behind by several months on, on the street program. It's not that we're behind by several months, it's that we missed a season that you typically do a certain type of work on, on, on roadways. So it's kind of a colder season. We can't, we're missed that opportunity. So that some of the streets that we were planning on doing this year, they automatically get moved until next year. The other issue that we ran into because of the storm is some of the types of pavement we intended to do, those streets will need to be reevalu-, reevaluated. We plan to do that this summer. We plan to reevaluate streets and look at, see what type of pavement would now suit best that might have changed because of the storm. And one of the reasons that I made the statement earlier depends on what council wants to, to do aside from the timing of it is, as I understand, the original budget was approved such that it depleted quite a bit of our general fund reserves. And from what I understand lately is that that's not the direction they want to move, we want to move forward with the direction that, as I understood it, was to perhaps look at the option of not eliminating so much of general fund reserves, but try to push some of this projects that we don't absolutely need into the next year. As far as having a contractor do this, we are using as much contractor work as we possibly can. Some of the things that, like, street prep work that's typically done by city staff, if you bring a contractor in, you decimate a lot of that budget on contractor work with very little work in return. And it also takes quite a bit of time to prepare bids and prepare construction documents. That ties up a lot of our time and just the timing of it, it just doesn't work out. It's best to use city staff for as much as we can and then use contractor for what's appropriate for contractor work.
Councilor Williams?
Yes. Eric, you may want to answer this question. And the way Mr. Prince put it, we have two point eight million dollars assigned to streets. That seems to me plenty of money that we could get Lowman Ford done as soon as possible. I know you've been working on patching up the holes and fixing the stuff that was affected by the storm, but I'm not having a clear understanding of when Lowman Ford project would start. And then whatever is left over, you would have opportunity to do some other streets. So I don't, I don't see where you need additional monies to do anything for this year. Am I wrong on that?
Mayor, you don't answer that one? You don't want me to answer?
No, no, I'll answer that one. So if you, if you look at our fund ballot, we're at a little over three point two seven four. We have interest of ninety-eight thousand. We're looking at about three point three seven two. If you add in that five hundred and something that's in that golf, I mean golf, park account, you know, we're looking at three point eight, somewhere right in that area, three point nine, somewhere right around there is our fund ballots. Okay?
Okay.
When, when Josh put this budget together, the, the, the purpose was to keep everything so that we had a ninety-day reserve out there for operate, for overruns, things like that. You know, we don't want to drop below the ninety-day operating balance. I don't know if it was because of the clear gov system that we used, what are revenue projections, you know, it was, it was all balanced when the budget was put out. But following the storm and all the expenses, I started crunching numbers and I saw where we had about four point one million dollars worth of projects on, on the books planned and a total of only about three point eight million dollars in, in revenues. So that's when I started calling these work sessions, started reaching out to my department heads and, you know, with Roger and saying, hey, we've, we've got to redo our CIP projects for this year because we don't, we don't have that money in there anymore. It, it's not there. I'm also, you know, concerned. This goes back to last year. We started that no new tax thing with the state government. You know, I don't, I, I still don't know what that's going to do to us this year because we had so much growth last year. I don't know if our revenue's coming into this next year. Are going to be, I don't know what they're going to do. I don't know how much we're going to have to lower our tax rate. You know, going into this next year. Uh, I mentioned earlier, we've got state legislature and trying to pass a bill that would require almost everything we do. Be paid for in cash and. Where we could go and get all of our projects done with what we have probably. It, it. It was going to leave us with very little money in our cash reserves and. I don't like that. So my direction to, to uh, Roger and the staff was, hey, we need to, uh, we need to cut stuff and that's, that's where we're at right now. So. You know, it's, it's going to, they're going to go on direction from council, but. I say until we get our new numbers from Travis County and know what our budget is going to look like. Going into the next fiscal year, I think we need to try and, and, uh, save as much of this money as we can. So. That's where we're at. Yes, Counsel Williams?
Well, I, I agree with you on that, but, uh, you know, I mean, it seems to me that the Lowman Ford Street is the main street in order to get fixed. I do think we have enough monies. In the street plan to do Lowman Ford. And we may be able to do all those other streets and that's fine. We're just readjust and Eric will have to go back and lay out a different plan to do other streets, but I think we need to uh, fast speed getting Lowman Ford done.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, that's, that's, that, that one is not off the books. That is definitely, definitely going to get done. It's the other, it's the other portion of the street rehab that we have to really look at. And, you know, it's. As Eric touched on, because we've missed the season. And other things, it's really not that difficult to push these back into the, push these forward into the next fiscal year because we're going to have to reevaluate streets. Wait for another season, uh, in the fall. So the timing was kind of beneficial and that it would allow us to save some, some cash reserves. So. That's what we're looking at, but Lowman Ford is definitely, definitely going to happen. And I believe for the agenda, you're going to be getting more information on the bids and stuff for Lowman at next week's meeting. So. Yes, Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to apologize. I keep having problems with my internet here. So I've missed some of the, the discussions that you've had. One of the questions that I have for Mr. Belay is how much money was allocated for streets that has not been spent in this fiscal year? And could, and could we direct that money towards the, um, redoing of Lowman Ford? So two, kind of two questions at one time.
Yes, Mayor, good question. Uh, so for this year was two point eight million was, uh, budgeted for the street rehab program and that included Lowman Ford. None of that money has been spent. As a matter of fact, Lowman Ford, uh, contract will come to council on the first meeting in May. So as Mayor stated, uh, Lowman Ford is still moving forward. We just had to go back out there, rebid the projects and, uh, and we anticipate if council does award it, we anticipate it to be, uh, paved and looking just like Bobby Ford, hopefully by July.
Thank you. I, I'm still, um, still not sure that I heard an answer to my first question, which is how much money, um, have you not spent that was budgeted to be spent this year on other streets?
Yes, Mayor, so it was budgeted two point eight million dollars and we haven't spent a dime of it. I thought I said that.
Okay, I think I, I had missed it earlier.
Okay, Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it appeared to me, w-watching the budget process, uh, last year that it was an explicit strategy to, uh, draw down our reserves to pay for a lot of capital projects. And I think that kind of has us where we are today. So, um, i- i- this isn't by accident that we kind of find ourselves where we are. And then the second point I would make is, is, and then you've said this a couple of times, Mayor, and I just want to be kind of clear on it. Uh, you've indicated that, you know, moving forward, if this new law passes, that, you know, will have to be cash. But I believe what you've indicated, the law says is that CEOs would no longer be allowed, but GOs would. And GOs just require a, a, a citizen vote. And so, uh, we just would need to put that into our strategy. Uh, moving forward, if we believe that it's the appropriate thing to, to use debt, is that we, uh, design our debt programs, uh, very carefully. Uh, for the things that the citizens really want and roads absolutely is, is one of those things. My guess is water and wastewater projects would also be things that we'd be very much in favor of. And then we, we go and, and, um, educate the public on what is it we're trying to do with those debt offerings. Uh, so that when it comes time to vote, they'll vote their conscience and they'll either vote to do those things or not. And if they do, then we absolutely can, can move forward with those. Is that an accurate kind of assessment of where we might be, Mayor, if they do pass this new, uh, law?
Yes, so. Yeah, that was what we've been working on for the past three years. Uh, but the direction that council had provided going into the budget was we would not drill down below the twenty-five percent ninety day reserve. And as you'll see when we get to the topic number three, our utility fund is fine. There's no issues with the utility fund. But, uh, the general fund, uh, just between pulling out expenses here for the, you know, for the uh, winter storm and, and overtime and things that we didn't, we didn't budget for, that we may or may not get reimbursed for in the future. It's just, it's just dropped us down to where now we're below. That, that level. And I mean, we could, we could still do everything. But it would just, it would wipe out our reserve fund and I just don't think that's safe to do. Along those lines of the legislation, i- it's not so much the projects, the capital improvement projects, but they're, they're talking about anything that has like interest debt to it. Now, we took steps previously to try and make sure that anything that we bought, our police vehicles or, or trucks, our heavy equipment, that we were not using CO bonds or paying interest on those. We were trying to make sure that we always had cash reserves on hand to, in either the M and O budget for each department or somewhere. So that we didn't have to pay this interest. So we're kind of ahead of the ballgame when it comes to this legislation, but I, you know, I just don't know that we're always going to be that way. Let's take this, this contract that we just awarded, um, for Chris and his equipment for the golf course. Uh, if this new legislation passes, that may not be a, a deal that he can structure where he can do a lease purchase. And that would have to be something that would be included in a GO bond. You know, things for the airport. Yeah, it, uh, there are just a lot of little things that we may, that you know, may not be able to pay cash for in the future. And I, I just want to make sure that we've always got enough cash reserves on hand.
Right. Uh, I totally understand, Mayor, and I completely agree with being financially prudent with regard to the general fund reserve. I think you're spot on with that. I just want to kind of raise the issue that if we do, if that legislation is passed, then we may have to adjust our strategies and we may have to make sure that we educate the, the populace, uh, quite well over, you know, things, larger things like roads and water and wastewater infrastructure and, and having a bonds that go on the, the ballot for them to vote on. Um, and so people need to be aware of.
Yeah, and that's not a bad thing.
Oh, I agree, completely agree. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't mind, I don't mind the House bill, you know, what it stands for. I just got to make sure that we're prepared for it.
Understood.
Anybody else on council? Yes, Counsel Prince?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the numbers here. So, um, and my guess is you'll need Star to help you on this, but, but the, can, can we hear first, first question, what the dollar amount is that, you know, a general fund reserve would be at ninety days? What does that equate to? What does ninety days general fund equate to in dollars?
Three million forty-one thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, I'll, I'll call it three million and change. But thank you. So that's, that's good. Um, a- and then my, my second question, and I'm looking at the latest, uh, financial report and I can't find it in there. How much money has, because part of the plan, if I look at the budget plan, the general fund, there was a transfer to CIP that's in the budget of three point one million. So has any or all or some of that planned transfer to CIP out of the general fund already happened? Um, because I mean, that's, that's important to understand where we are on the, the total balance of what's already been transferred out. That, that's part one of the question. Then part two of the question, has any money been already set aside somewhere for streets? And so it's in another fund, not in the general fund reserve?
No, so, uh, there's been three projects. Uh, town center development, airport tea hangers and Lago Vista Greens Construction. All three of those have been transferred out. And that was the ones I was talking about earlier. Two of those we have not, uh, contracted, spent any money on. The town center development or library expansion, however you want to call it. And the airport tea hangers. So that's one point four two five. That could possibly go back into our reserve fund ballots to help boost that cash reserves. Uh, as far as streets, as far as I know, uh, the list that I was provided, nothing has been taken out yet. For actual streets. Uh, I'm thinking, of course, when this Lowman Ford Road contract uh, comes to us and we award the bid, if and, if and when we award the bid, then that money will be transferred into an account for that project. Is that, uh, Star, is that, did I state that correctly?
Not, not quite. Um, if you look at page twenty-eight of your packet, um, the, the, I've got all the CIP projects that are active listed there. All that list, the park project, town center development, continuing street maintenance and the airport hangars. Each of those has some activity on it. The park money was moved, um, a year or two ago. So that's not coming out of this year's general fund reserve. But the park, park project, it's forty-five, almost forty-six thousand. Continuing street program, we've spent ten thousand two seventy-five so far. And on the tea hangers, we've already spent eighty-nine hundred, hundred. On each of those other projects, other than the top three that were listed on that page, those are just moved out on a invoice by invoice basis. I did, it's not like I took the whole amount of money and funded it. So that, knowing that that was going to take a process over time, we're just paying those invoices as we go. So it looks like forty-six, fifty-six. Around sixty-six thousand of those other dollars have been moved, but that's all.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Prince?
So if I understand it right, the, the budget that had been put together, that was approved last year. Accounted for keeping the appropriate amount of reserve. And it assumed we would transfer three point one million dollars into the CIP fund and still have enough reserve.
No, sir, that is, that is not correct. It was called, it was called out in some of the verbiage with the budget. Um, Josh presented in his budget the whole thing where we were going to spend down the reserves to a certain number and then replenish them. So it was called out in the original budget. I don't know what page it would be because my version is totally different than y'all's version. And I don't know if it was in the words that actually made it into your budget book or if they're just, um, on one of the clear gov sites. But the intent was to go ahead and use utility and general fund reserves while we had the money instead of going out for bond money to do as many of these projects as we could. And he knew full well it was going to take us down below the reserve. I believe it was one point something million that he said we'd be at on the general fund side. If we went ahead and split those projects. And Mr. Sullivan's nodding because he remembers that discussion.
Okay, well.
Yeah, scared me that we're going to go that low with the reserves. I apologize, Mr. Prince.
Yeah, no, no problem. I, it's, it's really disappointing. And of course, this falls back on our previous city manager, but, but, uh, the fact that we had planned to do two point eight million dollars in street work. And now we're struggling to do nine hundred thousand for Lowman. It's just, just shocking to me. I, you know, I, it's, I, it's appalling. Uh, so to me, streets are the priority. We need to do more than just Lowman's. Uh, and if that means we shut down the library stuff, if that means that we shut down the park stuff, that's, these are the kind of things we need to be talking about, but, but to only do Lowman's Ford this year, that is, that is so much of an under-delivery to what our citizens will promise. I just, I, I just, I'm, I'm just not okay with that to stop with only Lowman's for this year.
Right. So, I mean, there are, we could do more than just Lowman Ford if the timing is right. You know, like he mentioned earlier, we missed the season. So I don't know when the next season would come along. I'm assuming it's in the fall because of the temperatures and, and stuff. But it, it was just the timing of it was such that whether it comes out of this budget cycle or the next budget cycle, you know, it's going to be, uh, you know, at a time that it ma- it may be after thirty September when, when we're doing it. So. You know, it, it's just whether, what, what we want him to spend, how much do we want him to spend out of this? You know, budget this year. So, I mean, we could do more. It's just a direction of council, so. Yes, Counsel Marion?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I would echo much of what, what Paul, um, just said. I'm, I think I'm even more disappointed that we would have missed the season. Um, seems like we would have had the fall and a good portion of the spring sun sometime around the, the spring, uh, or the winter storm. Um, to take care of at least some of these street projects, but the fact that we haven't done anything on them and the fiscal year started in October, I mean, I think in my opinion is just, uh, is not acceptable. Um, I do think that citizens expect from, from us to take care of needs before we address wants. And so I would agree that if that means we shut down some of these other projects that are not necessary, but we have to drive on the roads, right? Then that's, to me, what it seems like we should do so that we could deliver on some of these other promises that we've made to the, to the citizens and address infrastructure because we, we just can't do without that.
Counsel Weatherly?
Yeah, uh, cut, just a couple of things. Uh, first off, uh, Counsel Marion, uh, there is much of the street work that is in a season when the temperatures are a set temperature. You can't do them early because you're wasting your money and your time. You put on some of those products too early, too cold, and they just chip off and they're gone. So a lot of the street work that we need to do is street work that's had to wait for the temperature to get right. And the freeze that we had in February just threw a kink in the whole process. Now, I don't think there's anybody on this council that doesn't realize that Lowman is a priority. Regardless of what else we do, Lowman has to be taken care of. We were planning to take care of Lowman. We had it going. We were setting up everything to do it. We had already taken bids on it. We cannot control the weather and the weather is what has messed it up. Not anything that our staff has done, not anything that this council has done. It is things totally beyond our control. It is nothing we could have changed. Now, we all agree, Lowman is a priority. It's got to be done. Yes, we're going to have to move money around. We can figure out what we need to move. But to get Lowman done is what we have to take care of the next meeting. Get a bid approved, get somebody to work on it and Get a bid approved, get somebody to work on it, and get it taken care of. But I haven't heard anybody on this council say that they're against or are trying to avoid fixing Lowman. And certainly, the staff and the council in the past have not been avoiding taking care of it. We were working on it. And the freeze just put a cramp in everything. So all we can do is go back, replant it, bid it out again, and get it done.
And for projects beyond that, you know, we will have to get with Eric and see if, you know, if there are projects that we can get done this fiscal year. And if so, how much of it do we want to get done? And how much do, you know, how much do we want to spend? You know, I have, I have set that reserve balance pretty high. That's just my recommendation. You know, council can give directions on other projects if they so choose. And I'm just throwing out, you know, my opinion that we should hold off on projects that aren't urgent. And I know streets are urgent. But combine that with the timing and the seasons, you know, having to reevaluate some of the streets. I don't know if we could get them done within this fiscal year anyway. So that, these are just my suggestions. Yes, Council Williams.
Well, again, I echo, you know, Lowman is an important street that we have to get done. I think in addition to that, Eric can come back and tell us how many additional streets he thinks he could get done in this fiscal year, and we could determine if that's an appropriate amount of streets. If we have the appropriate amount of dollars and just judge it from there. You know, there is no way, I think he had it based on doing around 30 streets. There's no way he's going to be able to do that. So therefore, you know, I would like him to come back and tell us, you know, in addition to Lowman, I get 10 additional streets done. Or I get eight additional streets done. So he just needs to come back and be able to give us a firm number on how many streets he thinks he can complete in this fiscal year. There is no way he's going to utilize 2.8 million dollars in this fiscal year. It's impossible.
Yeah.
So there will be monies left over in the street plan that would go over into the new year. That's my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Council Prince.
Can I get some clarity? I've heard several people say, you know, there's a season of the year for doing street work. And actually, I heard Mr. Belay say, we kind of missed it. So if I'm hearing that right, we're six months into our fiscal year. We've spent zero on streets, is what I'm told. And we missed the season. So when is the season? And when was the decision not to spend any of the 2.8 million dollars made?
Mayor, I'll try to answer that best I can. First, I'd like to apologize to Council Member Davila. We did spend $10,000 on it instead of not a dime. Part of it was to terminate the existing contract with a previous contractor. And we also had to do some geotechnical work. So in total, $10,275. So my apologies for that. I didn't look at it. In regard to the season, I just want to clarify a little bit. So there's, there's certain types of pavement. One of the pavements that we've looked at to do rehab, some of the work, to rehab some of the streets is called micro-surfacing. Downside micro-surfacing or slurry seal or cheap seals is you have to do crack seal, you have to crack seal the pavement. And if you do it in summertime, that is counterproductive. You tend to miss out a lot of the a lot of the pavement that could be rehabbed by crack sealing. You tend to miss a lot of that on summertime. We did do that last year when we crack sealed, what was it, National and American? We did that very late in the season, and we noticed this year that some of those cracks started showing back up on the surface. So we kind of, we took a chance at it and didn't work out as well as we hoped. It worked out some, but not as well as we hoped. So on this coming year, we had several streets to pave. Some of them were via overlay, some of them micro-surfacing, some of their fog seals. So when we say, when I say the season, and I should have expanded a little bit more, is the certain types of pavement that require this type of rehab or pre-rehab work that needs to be done in winter, which is mainly crack seal and some drainage work. So those are, that probably impacts, I would say, half to two-thirds of the streets that we were originally trying to work on. And then when I mentioned earlier, we can do plenty of streets this year. Just really depends on how comfortable council feels now that the question has come up, whether we, council wants to spend as much money to bring down the reserves or not. So that's really, we're just looking for your direction, council. So we can still do plenty of streets this year. It's just not going to be, it's going to be less than we have for what we're planning on doing to begin with.
Council Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think I said this earlier, but I'm going to say it again, kind of dovetailing Eric's comments. You know, the last city manager and the last council had an explicit policy decision that was made for the budget. And that was that they were going to spend down cash instead of taking out debt to do certain projects. And the intent with the last budget was for our reserve to get down to 1.5, 1.8 million. Now, we could continue that and get a lot of this stuff done. But I think the mayor is suggesting he's uncomfortable with that. And I don't know that I disagree with the mayor now. But let's just be clear that it was explicit last year that the city manager suggested and the council approved that they would spend down the reserve to, you know, 1.8 million or so. And if we make the decision to alter that, that's a, you know, a decision we're certainly able to make. But we're, it's going to cause us not to do some of the roads that we had anticipated that we would do when the budget was approved last year. So again, this is a very explicit strategic decision that was put forward and approved last year. And now we're just saying, we're going to take, we're going to deviate from that. And it needs to be equally explicit by this council that that's the direction that we're going to go, in my humble opinion.
Yeah. You know, and the Star had mentioned it, you know, it was going to be replenished. Well, my thing is I haven't seen that replenishment to the level that I was under the impression we were going to get. And I don't know if that's because of, you know, we, maybe the replenishment has come in and because of the expenses that we've had with the winter storm, it just hasn't, it hasn't built our reserves back up to where at least I was under the impression it was going to be. Because my discussions, we were not going to get, you know, when we got to the end of this fiscal year, we were not going to be below our 90-day reserves. And looking at the numbers now, I don't see that that's going to happen. So I'm trying to make adjustments to make sure we stay there.
Mayor, the replenishment was not going to come within this fiscal year. It would be an ongoing process as we would squirrel money back over from the general fund, excess funds over to the reserve account. So it would be a several-year process. It wouldn't just happen immediately. This year, we were going to be in the process of spending down all of that money, the 3.1 million out of general, the 2.1 out of utility fund reserve. Time would allow us to build it back, but it was not going to be immediate.
As Council Prince.
A clarifying question. If I look at the latest, from Ms. Lockwood, if I look at the latest finance reports, the balance, the current balance of the general fund reserve account is 3.175 million. And we had this discussion about, there's about $500,000 in the park fund. Is that, is that $500,000 in the park fund part of the 3.175 I see in the budget report or in addition to?
The park fund has its own separate account and is restricted. It is called out in your financials a little bit further down from the utility fund reserve account. It's a standalone account. So no, it is not part of the 3.1.
Yeah, I see it now. Thank you very much. So if we, if we, about that, this park discussion that we had, we've got 3.1 in the general fund and 585,000 in the park fund for a total of almost about 3.7 million between those two together.
Yeah, and about 100,000 in interest.
And about 1.425 million in the expansion and in the tea hanger account. That's separate as well.
Right.
Right. So all of that being said, I think we're in a position to go as fast as we can without making bad engineering judgment on street repair above and beyond Lowman. And that's, that's what I would, I would recommend we look at. So I think several people have said it already. Though I would recommend we ask Mr. Belay to come back and say, what can you get done this year? You know, that's not just throwing bad money, good money after bad engineering practice. You know, consider the street per strings to be open to the extent that we're not wasting money on streets.
May I make one more clarifying remark? The park fund itself is restricted money. It can only be spent on the park projects. It can't be spent for any other purposes.
Right. But with the things we're looking at with the park, with the road access and possibly their restrooms, that's where that would come out of and would not have to touch the general fund reserves, hopefully.
That's correct. And it was, that too was called out in the budget last year on the CIP. If you look at the revenue side, that was one of the specific revenue sources to fund some of the, for the park project.
Yeah. Council Davila.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to chime in here and say that I fully agree with what Council Prince has just said. I believe that we should go ahead and do Lowman and whatever else we can do with that 2.8 million that was in the reserves to do the street repairs. So let's do Lowman and everything else that we can do within this fiscal year and do that with whatever money's available in the budget to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from council? All right, I'm going to open the floor to citizens. Yes, Ms. Lucero.
Just a question for Scott, for Star on the park funds being restricted. The park funds are only being restricted if we are eligible for the matching funds, right? If we're not, if we don't get the matching funds, then it's not restricted. And we could use it back to refund our, refill our reserves, right?
No, ma'am. Once we've moved it over to the park fund and our clear intent, we put that money up in order to secure the first grant. It's my opinion that we need to stay in the park fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I say something? This is Jan.
Yes, Jan.
Yes, I want to, I'd like to elaborate on what I talked to you just for a couple of minutes about today. We were very excited to get a library expansion, but there are a number of things about this expansion the staff and I have never liked, are not real happy with. We, it's not the project that we would have probably wanted to put together, that it been completely our choice. But we're okay for now. We have enough space. Yes, we could use some more space for a children's area. We do have a functioning meeting room that will work. None of, we all hate the two-story. For a, for a community our size, we think that the two-story causes the library to lose some of its warmth and personality. If we were in a big city, Austin, Round Rock, a place like that, yes, I would see that. But, but I've visited many, many libraries in the years that I've been here. And usually in towns, our cities our size, you tend to see a one-story structure. Also, the expense of an elevator, where the stairs would have to be, takes up space that we could put another office or a study room. There are just a number of things that we think we could do a better job with planning in. So we just wanted to let you know, our feelings will not be hurt if we get put on the back burner for right now. I think we could do a much better job of planning that. And I know, and I've been in City Hall enough to know how much you guys need the space. So I think you should come first.
All right, thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody else in the audience? All right, we will move on to item number three. And that is utility fund CIP projects. And I really don't have anything for me to lead off with. Unlike the general fund, our utility fund is well-financed for the projects that we have on the agenda, I mean, on the CIP plan. So we're not, we're not, we're not facing the same issues with the utility fund. How, how are we planning to draw down, you know, the funds out of these reserves and keep them above the 25%? How it happened in one and didn't happen in the other? It definitely wasn't my intent, working with Josh on this. But our utilities fund is fully funded. So I don't really have anything to say on the utility fund. So if there's, Eric, do you have anything you want to present to council regarding the utility fund CIPs before I open it up to them?
No, Mayor, without me having given an update on each and every project, if council has any questions on an individual project, then it starts there off, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Council?
Yes, Council Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious if we could get an update on the projects still remaining from the 2017 bond package. I think the wastewater project may be the last one. But if Mr. Belay could give us an idea of if there's any outstanding work related to 2017 bond package projects, that would be helpful to me.
Or Star. Star may know which ones.
Yes.
Hang on, Council. I got a little cheat sheet on my wall here that I'm going to pick up.
If you look back at page 28, it'll be helpful again in your packet. And Eric, that may help you too. The Skater project is still ongoing. Trying to find page 28. Water treatment plant improvements, the lift station Skater improvements, water master plan number one. Those are all continuing part, part of the original bond projects. Eric, is there another one in there? I think that's the Lowman tank part two, if it's still got any activity.
I'll go through all of them. I've got a little cheat sheet over here. I don't like, yeah, on the wastewater treatment plan, the majority of the expansion is done. The one item that we have left on there is to install a mechanical debris catcher, if you will. And that, that has been put on hold for now until we get an engineering, we're doing an engineer study on the plant expansion. So until we get a better idea of what they, what they're recommending, we'd like to put that on hold for a few more months and then see what comes in. And we don't want to put something in there that the engineer says, it makes more sense to do something a little bit different. So we're just holding off on that. I believe it's, I believe what's left is about $400,000. But as far as the expansion itself, that project has been completed. Safe route to school, there was a 2017 bond that was completed a while back. Obviously, the traffic light, Lowman and Boggy that was done, Camilla and Dawn intersection. Based on, so most of the money was transferred to other projects. The signage and some stop signs that were put on there were considered at the time sufficient. Obviously, airport property acquisition, airport tie-downs are done, Lago Vista clubhouse repairs complete. Water quality improvements, that project is on hold because the water quality improvement was as part of the judgment for the hollows project. And that project, since there's a new developer there, that was put on hold because some of these improvements may be taken care of by the developer. The city may participate in, but it would be counterproductive at this point to but it would be kind of productive at this point to do any type of work there when there's the full development going on. Lift station SCADA improvements, we've made some adjustments to our little SCADA. We're still continuing to make some more improvements to the SCADA. Obviously, the Veterans Park has been complete. The sports complex project is also complete. The street rehab project, there was obviously $500,000 at the beginning, that was also complete. But now it's it's turned into an ongoing project. Water master plan number one recommendations. All those projects are complete. We just have on one project, the civic water line. We have one last piece of paperwork that we have to do. And I believe we have a bill to pay the engineer. And and after that, that project will also be complete.
Okay, Mayor, if I might, I just had one follow up question. And I'm not sure who has the answer to this, but I'll just put it out there. Is there any restriction? Let's say, for example, as the subcommittee on rates gets with the Nalisa and we figure some things out and we decide part of the strategy is is to try and put some stuff out for debt of funding. Is there any restriction? If there are unfinished projects from the 2017 bond project, does that restrict us from going out for any new bonds?
Any new balls? I wouldn't think so. New bonds.
It would not restrict you. No, it would not restrict you.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
The only restriction we have, Mayor, is to use the funds first within these projects. And then we can also use the funds to pay off debt.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Counsel Brett?
I had a real hard time following you, Mr. Belay. So I wondered if for me, it would be very helpful if you have the packet that we're looking at tonight. I'm looking at page twenty-seven, where I think Star probably put this together. And it has a list of 12 projects under this utility fund reserve account. If you could give commentary against that list, I would find that very helpful. I just, since you were working off your personal list, which didn't correlate to anything in the packet, I was I was really having trouble tracking.
And Mayor, sure thing, just Councilmember Sullivan asked about the 2017 bond and what's on what's on your packet is not all of the 2017 bond projects. So I just wanted to answer his question. So on the looking at the CIP project and water sewer impact fee study, Roy and I are talking with a consultant to develop the roadway impact fee and to update the water and sewer impact fee and also do work on a thoroughfare plan. So that's ongoing and it's still on track for 12 month completion. We're hoping it's going to be a 12 month completion from the starting date. So we're hoping by next fall, it should still we should be well into closing this project. Wastewater treatment plan improvement, as I mentioned earlier, this project, the expansion portion of the project has been fully complete. The only item that is left is is a mechanical automatic trash catching system that was planned on being placed on there. The lift station SCADA improvement, we are working, we're still working on that project. We've made some improvements to our SCADA system. We're running some troubleshooting now and we're 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 going to make some more changes and also working on overall master plan on SCADA. Water water master plan number one, that was originally split into three different projects. One project was Butler tank replacement after some modifications on that on on our operations. We decided at the time not to replace Butler tank. We didn't see a reason to spend the money on that. The second project was the Lomond tank replacement. That project has been complete. It's on Lomond and Pasail. You guys hopefully have seen the new tank that has been constructed on there. The third project as part of the water mesh plan number one was civic loop water water line around the elementary school. That plot project has been complete. I believe we have one invoice to pay and some record drawings to complete. But it's and should be hopefully all the paperwork should be complete in the next couple of weeks. The Lago Vista Park project, and you guys are well aware of that, the Town Center Development, which the library and City Hall expansion, the continued street maintenance program. Obviously, we discussed that. The leak detection survey, that project is near completion. Originally, it was budgeted for $120,000 because we had we had hoped that we were going to get a a little bit over half of that money in LCRI grants. However, we ended up not spending nearly that amount. And we actually we used we used most of the city the city utility utility budget to complete that project. So that project is mostly mostly complete. We just haven't paid the invoices. I believe there's a 30 or $35,000 invoice that we have yet to complete. And that will be that will be done. Golf course reconstruction, you guys should be aware of that. Airport hangars. Originally, we're hoping we're going to get tech start grants on that. But since that got shut down, obviously, that project got put on hold or canceled. Really up to you, counsel. Water treatment plan three maintenance building, we are still working on that. We got some bids in for for the building as part of the previous policy. We'll come to council and show council where we propose to put this building and any impact that it may have. Water treatment plan plan three sludge and water system improvement. That project, we retain an engineer, we've done some survey work, and we are still under engineering process under the design process right now. Water treatment plan three generator, we did receive 190,000, sorry, 119,000 dollar grant from FEMA. The remainder of it will come from the utility reserve fund. So that project is under design process right now. We're hoping to have that finished by the end of the fiscal year. Is there any question on a specific one that I need to address?
Counsel Brett?
Well, I'm looking at page twenty-eight of the packet, and it shows the the budget items for most everything you listed, although I think there were one or two things not on this list that you went through, like the civic water loop. But nevertheless, on this page, it shows having spent 10.5% of the seven almost 7.9 million dollar budget. What you just described, Eric, is things are a lot more done than this page would indicate. And really, my question is, I'm just trying to figure out the big picture of this 7.9 million. Well, not all the 7.9 on this page is for for utilities. I think it's maybe 3.4 if I if I added it up correctly on my little personal spreadsheet here. Of the, let's call it 3.4 million, if I did that right, that is utility capital projects. Are we going to spend all of that? Are we going to spend half of that? What's 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 going to be the roughly your expectation for the total spend this year?
So, well, I'll let Eric answer that. But in my discussions with Eric, we don't have any projects that are not going to be. You know, the intention is to spend all of that if unless there's certain savings that come in on each project. You know, there might be some savings here or there. But we don't have any projects that we're not moving forward far with. So, you know, the intent would would be to spend that amount.
Yes, Mayor, good point. We we don't have anything that we foresee that is going to be either pushed till next year or significantly delayed until next year. So as although Councilmember Prince made a good point, we're showing 10% spent on a $9 million budget. If one of the CIP project, one of the things you look at, look at is 1.4 million dollars for the park, almost $3 million for the street. So those projects are obviously wastewater treatment land improvements. As I mentioned, I think there's about $400,000 left on that project remaining. So the rest of it is $700,000 in town development that hasn't been spent either. Airport hangars hasn't been spent. Water treatment pond sludge project that hasn't been spent is still under design. There's a very minor amount that's been spent there. So that's I'm not sure how else to answer that without getting calculated.
That's perfect. And what I'm hearing, let me play it back for you and make sure that you agree with this statement. On on the utility projects, we're basically on plan for this year. There may be some small pluses or minuses as the actual bids come in. But we're basically going to do the projects we said we would do and the budget that we set out to do that. That's a 100% different story than the discussion we just had on streets. But it looks like utilities are on track and 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 doing things per per the plan.
That's that's correct, Mayor. So one of the I do want to throw disclaimer on there is a lot of times when these projects go on, and they may usually go on until, let's say hypothetically, until the very end of the budget year, September, September, the end of September. But what happens a lot of times, by the time you close out documents, you don't end up paying the last invoice until December or January. So what you may see is some of this money won't actually get spent until the next fiscal year. I know it gets a little confusing, but just the nature of the peace.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Anybody from the audience questions on utility fund projects? All right. Well, if that is it, then we'll go back up here to future meetings. Yes.
Yes, the question, Mayor, I this is back to our general fund reserve balance question. There has been every year, as long as I've been paying attention, there's been a significant chunk of money moved from the utility enterprise fund into the general fund. And the way it was described to me was that money was the sufficient amount of money needed to pay the utilities portion of the bond debt. And so but what I've also heard is, and I may have this wrong, but in my head, I believe I've heard that the real portion of the utility bond debt should be about 2.1 million, even though we've been moving 1.6 million over. So I wonder if we have an opportunity to move a little bit more money out of the utility fund into the general fund in order to keep our reserve where it needs to be and and still get the things that done that we need to do around streets, for example. Now, obviously, there's a limit. We can't move more than than is justifiable for paying bond debt. But maybe we could raise that 1.6 million up to something a little bit higher and and help our problem on that front. And so obviously, welcome feedback as to whether that makes sense or not.
Okay, so Star can chime in on the amounts, whether that how accurate that is. I don't have that information. But my my understanding is if it is more than the 1.6, and we wanted to go over that 1.6, then it would be a budget amendment that would have to be brought to council.
Mayor, the 1.6 is just the amount in this year's budget. Prior to this year, it's been fixed at 1.5 for several years. That's one of the things that comes out of the study that we have when Elisa Headen, every year when she's doing the rate analysis is to try to figure out how much it would cost. 1.6 is not adequate to actually cover what it would cost for the utilities portion to be covering the bond debt. When she very first started this, the program back in, I think it was like 2016 or so, at that point, it was 2 million plus. The increase in the rates in order to try to get us to where we can handle that was so big that council at that time decided to use a seven year plan to stretch that out. And over the course of seven years, gradually build us up to the point where we're transferring enough money every year to cover. That got sidetracked a couple of years into it. We did it the first year, I think. And then it got sidetracked. And then Mr. Kenneth and through the succession of new managers and new assistant interim city managers, we've just gotten completely off course. I can't remember what her recommendation was in the last study. Of course, it had gone up because by then we had new bond debt to include in it, too. But as the water committee is working with her now, that might be a discussion that they bring back on the table. If the intent is to lower the rates, and that's the direction she's being charged with going into that discussion, it's going to probably not include covering enough to cover all the bond debt. So part of her charge in the prior analysis was to try to recover the bond debt portion, what it costs for, you know, general fund staff, you working on utility related things. There was just a whole bunch of things that she included in that study. So depending on how Mr. Sullivan and the others have actually directed her, she may or may not include it. But it would be over, I can't remember now, it's 2.2 million, I think, when we first started out. So we would still be substantially below that.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
But so just to dovetail with what Ms. Lockwood just said, in our conversations with Ms. Headen, we absolutely, our focus is to give rate relief if possible. But it's always with the caveat, as long as we're staying fiscally responsible within the utility fund. So there is no intent whatsoever for us to reduce rates that would impinge the financial viability of the utility department. And then secondarily, I was going to say, I asked her very specifically, could could she conduct her analysis in a timely fashion so that we would have that as input to the budget cycle this year? And she says, absolutely. So please anticipate that we hope to be done by the, you know, June, July, late June into July timeframe. So we'll have her new analysis as input into our budget process this year, and hopefully that will be helpful.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
And I'll just add to that, I think this discussion of potentially increasing the transfer to general fund and and reducing water rates is not mutually exclusive in my mind. Because last year, at the end of last fiscal year, we were $3 million to the positive, even though we transferred 1.6 million from utility into the to the general fund. So I think there may be space to to increase, you know, utility fund covering more of its appropriate bond debt and still reducing water rates. That's my hope at least. But obviously, we've got to get the study to back that up.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. So we're on number four. Future meetings. Consider scheduling items for future council work sessions. You know, our schedule, obviously, we've got council meeting on the sixth. We've got another special call meeting on the 11th. But right now, we don't have any work sessions scheduled. I will throw out that Star and I have not, we've discussed it briefly, but we haven't finalized it. But sometime oh, probably in July. After our new city council, I mean, our city manager is here. We want our budget work sessions to begin. I would like to do it a little bit differently than we did in the past three years in that instead of having the city manager go through each department budget and then bringing it to council as a whole. I would like council to go through each department budget as we go along through July and August and September, so that we have a better feel for each department, not just the budget as a whole. And you know, CIPs obviously will be like last, because that's a big one. But we're we're we've discussed it. We got to figure out timing because some of the departments we can get through, you know, real quick. Some of them are real small. Some of them, like public works are really big. So those those are future work sessions that I would like to have. Obviously, that's going to tie up a lot of summer vacation time for council, but no water skiing. So those are work sessions that, you know, I have tentatively out there, just not scheduled. So anything else, work sessions? I know we've given direction today to staff with Eric. I know we've given direction today to staff with Eric and Chris for them to bring some stuff back. I just don't know if that's something that we need a work session on or if it can, can it be just brought to us at a regular council meeting? So, you know, y'all tell me what y'all think on that. Councilor Brett.
I would, I would say having some better, better data on the street plan sooner rather than later would be really good. The May 6th agenda, I think, is really overloaded. And that, I, I don't know if the, you know, May, May 20th has enough space for those discussions. But rather than letting the street discussion push into June, I'd say if we need to have a special call for that, I think that's worthy of it. So that, that would be my, my one point of feedback.
Okay. Yeah, just, you know, I try not to overload council too much. You know, we got May 6th, we've got May 11th, we've got May 20th, it's council. Everybody's got committee meetings in there. You know, we're going to one or two meetings every week. You know, so if we want to do one in May, towards the end of May, you know, we can shoot for that. I just try, I try not to overload council with two meeting meetings, so. Yes, Councilor Sullivan.
I was just going to make the comment, Mayor, that I believe that we've had enough conversations about the park in these work sessions that we probably can hit, deal with it on regular agenda nights, is my, my thought. Moving forward.
All right, so I'll make notes here. So street rehab, yes. Parts, not so much. All right. Any other?
Mayor, really, a quick question for Councilmember Prince. As far as data, just some clarification, what, is there something specific that you're looking for on streets?
Well, I mean, it was what was already stated before. I think Mr. Williams said it as well and, and Mr. Dabilla said it as well. I think that, you know, if, if, in fact, all the money that you originally had said you were going to spend this year was available to you, what can you get done? So what can you get done through the remainder of this fiscal year on streets? And how much does that cost? That's, that's the way I heard the feedback from, from several others.
Yes.
If anybody did agree with that jump.
Mayor, that's very clear. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right, well, if that is everything, then I will call this meeting adjourned. Did you have something, David?
I wanted to ask, is there any meeting that we could have where we could understand bonds a little bit more? Where we bring in a person to talk to us about bonds? Or do we have to wait to the budget cycle to, to do that?
As an education, I don't, if you want specifics, that would be a work session thing. And that would probably be a part of the budget discussion, you know, with our CIPs and, and stuff like that. See, see what we want to ponder. We also have to, again, watch the legislation and see what, what that does and whether it's, you know, and we may just want to do GO anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. So specifics on bond items would be a work session. But if you just need an education on the bond, I'm thinking we could just, we could do that. No problem.
Got it. Yeah. Just a thought.
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, if that is everything, I will call this meeting adjourned at 9:04 PM.